I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for May 11th. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fleet?
Here.
Commissioner Fedesco?
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Anton?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a call.
If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While I have you standing, anybody that's going to give any testimony tonight has to be sworn in. So I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Are you not to testify? Okay. And then I would ask that you silence your electronic devices. First item of business is the approval of our minutes of our April 13th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fedesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes as presented are hereby adopted. Old business. Planning and zoning item 11-015, James T. Kraus regarding the property located at 405 South Oak Avenue for the following. A zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35 percent maximum allowed in ER3 single-family detached residence district for the purpose of constructing a patio. Mr. Kraus?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I have a handout for everyone. My house or property has got roaders on since I saw you last month, so it's pretty much the same.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I received Shannon's information, while I don't want to argue or dispute it. I made physical measurements of my property, and the lot coverage in my mind is 44.8 percent. That aside, I would like to highlight that I've never been a general contractor before. I did it for the first time in August 2008, and I think I did an outstanding job. Long and short of it is, I submitted my plans to the Village of Westmont June 2008. They were approved in August 2008, and I began construction in September 2008. My original development permit, the payment, and the five separate permits that went along with it for the rough as well as the finish. All throughout that entire process, I did what I thought was within the letter of the rules and the law, and I submitted all the permits and called for the rough inspection and the final inspection at every point. Lastly, the last item I completed was August 2000, excuse me, July 2009 for the driveway, and the inspector came out, looked at the footings, the compaction, and that was approved as well. So up until I went to build my patio this year, again, it was approved at 300 square feet when my initial plans were submitted. I didn't know that I was over. So that's the trans State in truth.
All right. Shannon, do you staff have anything to say on this?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Kraus was kind enough, following our last meeting, to come in and bring a copy of his drawings. We then subsequently received our originals back from our outside consultants for comparison. The first floor plan, along with review of the architectural elevations, were used to make our best estimate of what lot coverage is. There wasn't a true site plan per the drawings, so we, again, had to scale off what the property lines were, you know, going up to the foundation lines and excluding the allowable overhangs where they were 18 inches or less. Basically, everything that was improved in one way or another was included, including the driveways, service sidewalk. On the original drawings, there was a deck shown instead of the proposed patio, but the numbers that we came to based on these plans, and yes, these two sets of drawings did match, they were the same dated sets. Currently, we estimated lot coverage to be at 49.6 percent. With the patio, there's some discrepancy here because if you scale it off, this brings the patio would bring lot coverage to about 53 percent. Using the petitioner's figure for the size of the patio, I think it was 464 square feet, that would bring lot coverage to about 55 percent. This, we also noted there were some areas of concrete that were added for the driveway that did not appear on the originally approved drawing, so we suggested a couple of alternatives. Those were presented by correspondence May 2nd. Those were that Mr. Kraus could appear here at tonight's meeting to request what we estimated was the most severe variance of 55 percent in order to construct his patio with the knowledge that that's 20 percent over the 35 percent maximum allowable by code. Or he could request that the hearing be tabled so that a survey could be obtained. That was a suggestion of our attorney, and that was something that I believe we discussed at our last meeting as well. You know, we don't have a surveyor on staff, so that would be the best way to get certifiable numbers in terms of what lot coverage is, true and correct. And then the other alternative would be to eliminate the patio proposal entirely and simply seek a variance request for the current lot coverage overage in the estimated amount of 49.6 percent. So, all that being said, the, Mr. Kraus did inform us he planned to appear this evening, and it seems like his, his decision is to proceed with the request for the patio. So there are still some significant concerns about the accuracy of the numbers because we did have to scale off some things, and again, there appear to be some field changes, but the worst-case scenario looks to be about 55 percent.
May I ask a question, Shannon?
Certainly.
You said the additional concrete. I don't know what that means, on the south and east side of the building.
There's some areas south of the garage that the pavement appears to have been expanded from the inspection and aerial imagery versus what the approved plan shows. So there appeared to be some places that were to remain open space or a small grassy area that were in fact filled, and the parking bay along the far east side of the drive, essentially the very end of the drive, seems to have been expanded a little bit more north than what was originally shown on the drawing.
Nothing has been changed there since I built it two years ago.
Our observation, our best guess, that it may have just been changed in the field, that what the drawing shows wasn't how it appears in the field, and only a survey can rectify that dispute.
I did a physical measurement of the driveway. I have that in my notes here, and that is 1,520 square feet.
Is it your intention, then, Mr. Kraus, that you do not intend to come up with a survey?
I, I can do another survey, certainly.
I mean with a registered survey.
When I, before I did the addition, Commissioner, I paid for a survey before we began construction, and I can call the same party and have another survey completed.
Well, you remember, that was my chief concern at this last meeting, is we're, we've got an ambiguous amount of numbers, your numbers, staff's numbers, the takeoffs, and...
You know, at the end of the day, though, after we do all of this, if you take a look at the second page, that is my sketch of what the patio would be, and as you'll see, I have a patio door that walks out into a mud pit, actually two of them, a six-foot one and an eight-foot one. And that was my, my mission all along was to do this, and again, if I would have done it two years ago, I wouldn't be here today. So as I understand it, I'm gonna do two things. Number one, get another platte survey completed that shows the exact percentage of ground coverage, and then next, come back and ask for a variance for whatever that square footage is, because I'm sure it's over 40 percent. It's 44.8, so I have to ask for a variance for that, and I have to ask for a second variance to build the patio. Am I correct?
Correct. Because if you get it, then I want it, because I'm at 40 percent right now. That's, that's a problem we have.
I understand.
Well, that's, I don't want to be talking down to you, you're talking down to me. I'm a general contractor too, and no matter what you have in writing, if the village finds out about it and it's bigger, that doesn't protect you.
You know, but insofar as, you know, trying to do everything according to all the rules, I did that, and I'm standing here. And, and again, throughout the entire process, I submitted my drawings, they, it took two months for them to be approved, they were approved, I started, you know, we dug the footings, came out, that was inspected, poured the foundation, that was inspected.
I've been in your shoes. It doesn't matter. It doesn't.
It's quite obvious to me that there was a mistake made or a lack of communication somewhere in the permitting process and the okaying of the permits, but what concerns us, by, if we were to grant you a variance right now, or recommend, we are only a recommending body anyway, we would legitimize what I would consider an egregious overage of lot coverage, and a mistake has been made, but it's really not us to make it in fact correct. Then am I to understand that you are willing to come up with a survey? Let's hear from the board. Let's start with Commissioner Thomas.
Anybody else will speak? Anybody else will speak first?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Anybody from the public who cares to speak on this? Okay, we'll close the public comment, let's go to the commissioners. Let's start with Commissioner Thomas.
I've heard nothing that would change my vote from last time so far, so I have, I have no questions.
Commissioner Pill?
I have a question for our staff. Shannon, when you come up with the, the existing 49.6 percent, that says that's based on permit drawings. So the original permit approved the patio.
The original permit showed a deck.
Or deck.
Rather than a patio.
So it included, that 49.6 percent includes that also?
Yes.
So isn't the variance, then, only 9.6 percent? I don't mean to minimize it, but isn't it 9.6 percent as opposed to 55 percent? Am I missing something?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. Commissioner, I think part of the problem here is that it appears there's a discrepancy between the approved plans for the driveway and what was subsequently built. There's a difference in lot coverage there.
Okay. So once, let's say, let me rephrase the question. If a survey came and said that this 49.6 was correct on the permitted drawings, that would include the deck, which was on the original approval for which the gentleman wants to substitute a patio?
Correct with that caveat that the deck at this time only counts as 50 percent.
Because that rule has changed also.
Yes, so that, this number reflects that.
And the 40 to 35 has changed also.
Right.
Okay, okay. That was the question I wanted to ask. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Anton?
I'd go with the 49 percent. That's, that's all I'll go.
So I understand, did you have a final inspection and an approval on the concrete work as it now stands?
Yes, sir, I did.
That was done by the village, folks?
Yes, sir, it was.
That's all I have. Commissioner Fedesco?
I'm going to ask this question, I'm not sure if you can answer. From the best memory, do you remember if the, during that inspection of the driveway, if there were any measurements taken?
They roughed it out in the morning. I lived in Rockford at the time. I always came and met Mike at the site. He was there, I arrived, and whether he took measurements, I honestly don't know.
So you can't verify whether he took the prints, the drawings, and measured what, what was supposed to happen and what did happen, or what was laid out?
No, I always kept a, a set of working drawings at the site, and they were always in the kitchen, and Mike knew where they were.
My assumption would be that the inspector would measure to see that everything conforms prior to the, you know, you had, you know, prior to the installation?
Yes, sir.
Because everything was formed out, everything was already there?
Exactly.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Fleet?
I want to go, just hearing what Mr. Pill was saying, go back with the 49.6, that includes what we see as the deck on the original?
No.
Because there's a statement in here that says...
I have it right here, let me...
Yeah, please do.
Yes, that figure includes 50 percent of the surface area of the decking from the original drawing. And it also includes some areas that appear to be pavement that, on the drawings, showed grass or open space.
Okay. And didn't the village inspector have access to those drawings when he did the inspection?
I can't speak for the village inspector. I believe that we require the drawings on-site. I don't know if they were accessed or not, unfortunately.
Drawings were always kept on-site in the kitchen, and the inspector knew where they were, and I met the inspector at every rough and the final. I was there for each and every one.
I might also say, I'm also a general contractor, have been for many years.
I did it one time.
And I, the standard operating procedure is drawings on the job. We all try to be as close to, pay close attention to them, plus normally you file their drawings with the village in addition to the ones you have on the job site. So if we, as a village, approved his drawings and we didn't measure, I say we, we accept responsibility for the people that represent us.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
The, these calculations from 49.6 to 53.2, the, the reason for the change is because it's a patio versus a deck, correct?
That's right. The deck counts as 50 percent.
50 percent.
The patio counts as 100 percent.
Okay. So that's the difference between those two. Okay. Is there any way that you could propose a deck, again, or is that not possible because of the configuration?
I could accommodate that. I could accommodate about a third deck and two-thirds patio because of the elevation.
Oh, okay.
Because there's two steps to one, one step and then one step, so there's actually three elevations.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Shannon, as his structure stands right now, without the deck, without a patio, what is his lot coverage?
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not good at doing geometry on the slide here.
That's why I'm having trouble without, without an accurate survey here.
I have his total, I have a note here that says his total without the patio is 49.6, and I show it as included as a deck. So the original figure that we estimated was about 2 percent higher at the last public hearing, based on the new information that we were able to obtain between meetings. But I do show it included as a deck in these figures. My note says without patio, 49.6 percent. With patio, 53.2 percent.
So then, Shannon, if we subtracted the deck and the patio, we'd be something less than 49 percent, perhaps 46 percent or 45 percent?
It would be around 150 square feet less of, of lot coverage.
Not to be a smart aleck, but my actual physical measurements are 44.8 from the outside.
And you, you use the pipes for the, the lot lines? In other words, the, the corners?
No, sir, I didn't. What I did was I, I know what the platte survey is and what the square footage of the lot is.
Okay.
I had that done before I started.
Okay, so you have a legitimate platte of the existing layout of the parcel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I physically measured the outside of the original structure. I blew out the back wall, and I know what the, the kitchen area is in square footage, measured from the outside, the rec room, what that is, which continues in the garage, and I measured that on the outside, and it's 44.8 percent, including the driveway, which is 1,520 square feet.
Shannon, can you agree to these numbers, or you, you still stick by your 49?
Well...
Better remove the...
Yeah, I, again, I'm not a surveyor, so I can't speak...
That's it, we're, we're working without a survey, and to be quite frank with you, it's...
All right, I, I mean, to be clear...
I think she said that if you take the 49.6 and you withdraw the square footage for the...
Deck.
Deck, it's going to be less than that.
And I, I think I have...
And the petitioner has said he thinks it's around 44.8.
Yeah.
So it's somewhere between 44.8 and 49.6.
I believe that that number is 48.6 without the deck.
There again, Shannon, on the original drawings, where it's, we now have solid concrete drive, there were supposed to be some open areas that are...
That's what it appears.
Concrete.
Going back to the original plan, the, in order to have an oversized garage, it had to be detached. In order for it to lay out correctly, I had to have a, a way to turn around, so that's the way the driveway was designed. And to my knowledge, we didn't deviate from the original drawing.
I, I think that's the point of disagreement, Mr. Kraus.
Okay.
We, we believe that there's a drawing in the file that shows less of a driveway than what you actually constructed. Now, that doesn't excuse the fact that we may have missed that on the inspection, but there appears to be a difference between the original plan for the driveway and what was subsequently built.
He's never had any intent to do anything different.
And I don't, and I don't have a problem with what he's got. 49 percent or whatever, that's fine. 57, you're never going to get me to sign off on. 52, you're not going to get me to sign off on. Sorry.
Well, see, the problem is that we don't, we're not really sure.
Right.
And I hate to, I know what, and you know what it costs for a platte. You know, it's, it's not, it's not a small thing. He's already spent the money to come before us. If he had done this when he had the time, if he had the money, he wouldn't, we would never see this guy.
True.
So, I don't know.
Well, there's no way, without an accurate platte survey, that I can, continent's going along with these numbers whatsoever. I could, myself, stay with the variance, because you are definitely oversized, I could, I could vote to grant you a variance for your house as it stands now, but with no deck, no patio.
Okay.
And even at that, I consider it grossly over. Now that's where I stand. Anybody else want to come up, formulate a motion? Do you want to wait for a survey?
Does he want, does he want to vote up or down, or...
You want an up and down vote? Let me put it to you.
Sure.
So, an up and down vote, so... I will entertain a motion, if someone cares to formulate one.
Not a formal motion, is it?
Pardon?
This is just kind of a gauge motion?
No, this will be a formal, I don't have to originate the, the motion.
True. So the motion is going to be different than what we have here?
The motion's going to be whatever you want it to be.
Well, the up and, up and down, the up and down is what's published, correct?
It'll be on what's been published. We can grant here, we can recommend granting him a variance for the structure as it stands now, without a patio, without a deck.
But that's not what's published, correct?
That's not what he's asked.
And you, my impression, when you said, "Do you want an up and down?", I don't know, if you took it that way, is the way...
Okay, that's right. We can vote right now.
This is for an up and down as to what it's published.
Right, right.
Okay. Then it's right. It's, this is my mistake, and I apologize for it.
If you're, if you're asking for is the whole, the whole patio?
Yes, ma'am. And what I would like to suggest as a caveat, your suggestion, do a third as wood and two-thirds of it as pavers.
Okay.
Do we know what that number would be? And then we still don't have...
That's...
Because he basically, he needs, he needs something by that door.
Right.
He can't step down from, from, from where he's, his living area, down to the ground. It's...
It's about two and a half feet.
It can't, it can't be. He, he would never get rid of the place. So if it has to be...
It's either going to be a stair or it's going to be a deck.
It would have to be a, a three-layer thing, the way, the way you're talking about there. That's, that's, that's fine. If it's going to cut into the, the variance by being 50 percent material as opposed to concrete, some of it, then, you know, then fine. It's, it's better than having nothing there.
Right.
But something has to be there. It can't, it can't be...
Well, okay, what constitutes this, then, could be worked out at the committee of the whole? We could vote on granting a variance for a deck or a patio. Counselor, is that correct?
Well, it looks to me like what we've asked, or what he's asked for, is this apparently 55 percent. I think Shannon had sent him an email that indicated that there were a couple of proposals so that she knew which way that we could, we were actually going to go, and we never really got a true response on it. I mean, my suggestion at this point is, is the only vote we can really have is on the 55 percent. If he wants to make changes to it based upon the fact that you want to do part deck now and, and part patio, or if you wanted to get a survey, I mean, we could obviously table it again for you to get to us exactly what you're asking for.
Okay. Exactly what I'm asking for is to build a, a patio, okay? In reading Shannon's, Shannon's note, it is way over 50 percent. In order for me to prove to you that it's not at that high number, I would have to pay for a survey. Instead of doing that, I physically measured what the existing structure is, including the concrete driveway coverage. My number's 44.8, yours is higher. You know, we can sit and dicker back and forth, it doesn't do you any good or me any good. The property as it stands, in order for me to minimize lot coverage, I would have to cut part of my driveway out, and I thought of that as an option, of, you know, cutting something down the center, but that is kind of ludicrous. So the way, the prop, the way the addition was designed, the way the side-load garage is, it's pretty much functional and should stay as is. And I, I understand the rules that you, you have established as far as water runoff, and I completely respect that 100 percent, but at the same time, I thought I was doing everything correctly, and I've, you know, I've come across this, this roadblock.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
On your garage, on the east end, you have, it's not, it's a score line in the concrete.
Say that again?
You have a line, Stan, what are they called at one date?
It's a, it's a reveal on the, on the concrete.
Yeah.
There's a reveal in your concrete at an angle.
Okay, it's a reveal in the concrete, and then from there to the east, there's, you have the curved section of concrete, that's obviously where you turned to turn around.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would that make an adequate patio for you?
No.
That's... At size, that amount of concrete?
No.
If that were to be gone and then.
If, if that were.
Have that added on as a patio for you?
If that were to be gone, I couldn't turn the car around or get out of the garage. What you're suggesting is I use the driveway as a patio.
Okay, then.
The surface area.
Surface area.
Not, not sit out there. He's saying if we remove that part, whatever that square footage is, is that enough to build your patio square footage? He's proposing a trade.
Yes. Take that up, lift it back to the backyard.
You know, cars do have reverse.
Pardon me?
Cars do have reverse gear.
Yep. What, this here?
It's a halo.
It'll come up around the screens.
Well, he's a troublemaker. That wall is a troublemaker.
Hey.
Mr. Commissioner.
We got one of them on, on the commission.
I have a question when, when the opportunity arises.
Okay.
Shannon, I meant to ask you, do we also have, do we also have copies of all the permits that the gentleman has?
Yes, the permit applications?
Yep.
Yes.
I have every one right here, Commissioner.
And we have those with the okay on them and all that? Do we have copies of that?
I don't, I don't have them with me this evening.
Oh, we do have them. Okay.
He has approved copies, so, you know, I, he has no reason to not to.
Okay, Commissioner Pill.
You know, the numbers thing is what's intriguing in this and it's difficult without a professional survey to look at that. But another number that sort of stands out to me is if the forty-nine point six becomes a beginning point, and even if it's not, it's only going to shift the whole point I'm going to make, one way or the other. And if that includes a proposed deck and that deck is at fifty percent coverage and we get rid of it and we go down to forty-eight point six, so we lose one percent. But if we make it a patio, that means we increase fifty percent. It all of a sudden goes up to fifty-five percent. How can it go down fifty percent for a finite area and lose a percent and go up fifty percent in the same and go up five point four percent? Something doesn't seem to balance in that. So I find that another intriguing area where the numbers don't make sense.
That's been my problem with this case all the way from the start. The numbers don't match.
Well, even it seems that on our part where we're trying to subtract, and I've done this a bunch of times and I still don't get it. I mean, that's why, well, anyway, it just, it doesn't seem that, because that's the same amount of area. It's the same darn fifty percent. I don't see how in one case it's a percent and in the other it's five point four percent.
Here's the rendering that we were referring to a minute ago, showing the area that the commissioners were discussing for removal right here. And the other point I wanted to make as you were talking about decking versus patio is that if the deck is going to be one-third of the total surface area, we may only get seventy-five square feet or so of a reduction in the total square footage of lot coverage.
Where is, where is that, the, the, what is shown, shown on one drawing is grass and is now concrete. Where is that?
This is, the drawing that you're looking at right now is simply the permit drawing that was in the file. So the other estimates were from review on site and the aerial imagery. And that was just scaled off to the best that we can without a plat of survey.
Shannon, I think, yeah, I'd like that question answered, you know. Where is it that is covered by concrete that should have been grass?
Well, partially here, I believe, and there was a part here.
How much of that, is it radius? Was that supposed to be a, you know, a square and it's now a radius? Is that what the difference is?
They're both radii now.
No, but I mean originally, on the original drawing that Mr. Kimball referred to. Maybe Mr. Kimball could, could address that.
Do we have that original drawing that was submitted for the permit, Shannon?
This is the original drawing.
Okay.
Shows the radius.
Yes, this is the original drawing right here. And then based on the inspection and the.
There you go.
The aerial. Now, there is a slight roof overhang there. But that is not taken into consideration in the total lot coverage other than there's a portion here that doesn't qualify as exempt and there's a portion here that doesn't qualify as exempt.
Okay, underneath this overhang here is dirt, okay? That's dirt under there and where this tree is blocking the view, that is radiused off the same as the original drawing that was submitted. So that is a little bit confusing. I can understand why you'd make that point. But that is dirt under there and I'd invite you to come over after this meeting. It's dirt.
Maybe wet dirt.
Pardon me?
It'd be wet dirt.
It's grass, actually. That's my little monkey with her proposed patio with the old dirt.
Shannon, can you put the original drawing back up? I think I see part of the area right there. Where that radius is there, if you look at the actual aerial, the radius is much more, shows more ground coverage there. On, yeah.
Here's the roof overhang.
No, Shannon, right now the radius, from what I remember when I walked it this afternoon, the radius takes off at the end of the garage and not by the overhead door. The radius is further east than what it's shown on this drawing.
More like here?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's some of the coverage that I think Shannon is referencing.
Okay.
That should have been green space but is now concrete.
Now.
That differs from the original drawing.
If we look at the other radius on the other side of the overhead door closer to the house, when I was there this afternoon, I would have swore that was all concrete in there.
And it appears to be that way in the picture if we look at the overhead. I mean, it is a lighter color, so it appears that it is totally concrete versus having the radius as the drawing indicates.
I guess a good way to see it here is, here's the corner of the house. And in the, in the permit drawing, the radius is more like here.
Here, this all sounds like concrete in here.
Yes.
Likewise. He said that under this.
The corner of the overhang, I have a little garden area here.
Right here. Do you have any intention of doing a survey and would you like us to postpone this or shall we vote up and down right now?
I will do whatever you recommend, Mr. Butcher.
I have a chief surveyor that'll do a good job. It won't cost you as much.
The other thing, no, is.
My brother.
Is that somebody who's done a survey on your property, to update the survey typically is cheaper than to, you know, to start from scratch, but, you know, maybe the, your connection would be cheaper.
I think that you would have a better result if you did wait because you'd probably go down tonight on it and where we're not the legislative body. They do pay attention to what we say sometimes.
We don't want you to fail the vote, have to come back and pay again, go through all that, going through this. So if you table it, it stays active. Get the survey, come back. We give, we give our recommendation, you move on.
And I would suggest that if you, once you get the survey, to take a good look at these, these curves and see if in fact, if you cut some of that concrete out and made the radii more similar to the drawing, what that would do. You know, in other words, once he does a survey, then go out there with the, you know, string, kind of put a radii out there and calculate how much additional space could be grass. You know, I'm not saying take the whole thing out, but if you take out part of it, how much more would it take out? And see if that makes any difference at all. I mean, it's going to be some square footage. Maybe fifty, maybe twenty-five, who knows? But take a look at that after you get the legitimate survey.
Mr. Chairman, staff might like to make one other point here. We, we certainly don't want to cause Mr. Kraus a great deal of anguish, you know. We're just enforcing the rules and we're just kind of the messenger here, you know. We don't make the rules, but we have to administer them. And to Mr. Kraus's credit, he did a commendable job in cleaning up a property that had been an eyesore in this neighborhood for many, many years. Now, I don't, we can't give him extra credit points for that, but, you know, we don't bear him any ill will as a result of this. You know, we're just, unfortunately, we have to enforce the code and the code is what it is.
I spent twenty thousand dollars just taking the garbage out.
I remember, I remember you saying that.
I attest, I can attest to that. I saw it before.
A mistake has obviously been made. One, and without an adequate survey, I would hesitate to attempt to legitimize it and make it, make it right. So if we can, if coming up with the survey is agreeable to you and if delaying this until you get a survey and come back, I would, you tell me.
Put me down for next month's meeting. I'll come back.
All right, I would entertain a motion to table this until next month.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Same time, next one. Good evening. Thank you, sir. Do business. Planning and zoning item one-one dash. One-eight. Adelia Entree. I apologize for this. Theokli? Theoki? Toki.
No H.
I apologize for my mispronunciation. Regarding the property located at ten West Burlington for the following. A, a special use permit request to operate a resale consignment store in the B-one limited business district.
That's me. My name is Adelia Toki. My husband cannot be here tonight. He's at a band concert where my daughter is performing and I need to go pick them up at some point. I am looking to open a upscale resale store over there on ten West Burlington. It's not at all going to be a junk shop. It's going to be nice stuff. And apparently I need a variance to do that. So.
All right, will anybody from the public speak on this? We'll close the public comment. A, start with Commissioner Fleet.
Yeah, looking through the window, it's a very small area.
It is a very small area. I intend to start small and then I want to grow into a bigger business, which would actually be more of a resale mall. So for the first few years, I just wanted to be my own little space and then grow into a bigger business. Sorry, I'm on camera.
So your only way to load things in is through the front door? It looks like it was congested in the back or?
I believe so. I believe the back door that I saw there went to the building next door. I'm not, I don't think it goes to that store. So yes, I would need to come in through the front door. And it'll be mostly furniture and some household items and stuff like that. There will be no clothing.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, this is a special use permit, not, not a variance.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I wanted to understand exactly what was, you were going to resell. So you're taking in older type furniture, you know, antiques, heirloom type furniture? And that's what you're looking to?
Not necessarily antiques. I mean, some of it could be antiques, but I will repaint it, refurbish it, make it look upscale and price it reasonably so that the furniture will keep moving so that people will hopefully buy it and then.
So this is not, I'm trying to figure out what, you know, I can understand clothing, you know, because there, people have lightly used high-quality clothing that the clothing resale shops sell, you know. You can't, you barely tell that it's not new. Okay, with furniture, I mean, furniture kind of tends to, unless it's antique furniture, it tends to get used and, you know, worn. And I'm just wondering, you know, what type of furniture, are you looking to get consignment? Are you buying this and then reselling?
I'm buying it and reselling it.
You're buying it and reselling it.
Taking consignment. As for the furniture itself, you would be really surprised at what you might find at a garage sale or even estate sales.
So you're looking at estate sales and this would be modern furniture or just all furniture?
All furniture.
All furniture?
Yes.
And where do you draw the line, is my question, you know, as far as whether it's quality, good quality, you know, junk, you know?
I tend to draw the line as to whether it's particle board or if it's made of real wood. I prefer real wood over particle board. For one thing, it's lighter and easier to move. For the other, I consider it higher-end furniture than particle board. So that's one place where I draw the line. Obviously, the furniture has to be in good condition to start with. I don't need to like be gluing legs on or stuff like that. It has to be still usable and it has to be able to be made to look presentable and nice.
Okay, all right. I get an understanding of it. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Did I read in here that you have had some experience in this area?
Yes, I do. I currently have a space at another resale mall called Resale Connection out in Lisle where I sell the same sort of stuff but have a much smaller space that.
Oh, you're on the one in Ogden?
Yes, I am.
That's a very, very nice store and it, if we had something like that, it would be good. Because they have some really nice stuff. With furniture, you have classic furniture that can be very old. It can be Duncan Fife, it can be French Provincial. These things aren't throwaways, you know, that use up and there's some nice stuff like that around. If it were that type of thing, I'd say go for it. The only problem is I, I think you have and you realize in a hurry is your lack of space. Furniture is generally speaking more bulky than a lot of other items you might carry.
Yes, my lack of space could be an issue. But the rent is reasonable, so I feel I can, you know, make the rent easily and make my bills easily. And with the reasonable prices that I intend to have, I don't intend to keep stuff in there a long time. I want things to change over quickly, so it's always a new space as opposed to coming day after day, week after week, seeing the same stuff. People are going to stop coming. So.
That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Anton?
Come by my basement. You can take everything as long as you take it. You can have it.
It's a deal. When can I come?
Good luck with it. Sounds good.
Commissioner Pill?
I have no questions. Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Do you know what you're going to call the store?
I'm going to call the store Pleasantville.
Pleasantville?
Mm-hmm.
I like the location for that type of store. Around the corner, it's not on Cass, it's off to the side. It's a great location. I hope you do better than the store that was across the street, across the tracks.
Right over here.
And I wish you all the luck.
Thank you.
Again, as the commissioners, my fellow commissioners said, my only concern would be for yourself is for space. It looked awful small when I looked in there, but I wish you the best of luck.
So we're going to recommend that this goes on?
No further comments? Okay, since we have a special use request, we have a reading of findings of fact. If we could have a reading, please?
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare. All operations will be conducted indoors in a small pre-existing tenant space. The applicants will not be warehousing merchandise, will display upscale refurbished furniture and decor for sale and no hazardous substances or explicit materials will be sold.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand.
Criteria number four, the adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The proposed use is located in the central business district, which is adequately serviced by utilities, accessways, parking, and other necessary facilities.
If you agree with this, you are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress, so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The proposed space measures 600 square feet, and there is sufficient public parking and public sidewalks in the immediate area of this proposed shop, thereby minimizing traffic congestion.
If you agree with this, raise your hand. Unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. No variances are needed or requested, and the proposed use otherwise meets the regulations of the B-1 limited business district.
If you agree with this, raise your hand, please. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. Would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees. Planning and zoning item 1-1-018, a special use permit request to operate a resale consignment store in the B1 limited business district.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on a motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Mr. Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard.
Okay, you have our recommendation, and staff could tell you when you'll go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole.
I do have a business plan. Would I need to turn this in to anyone, or not?
We'd be happy to make that part of the record, Mr. Chairman, if you so wish.
Okay.
Good luck to you.
Good night, and thank you very much.
You're more than welcome. Planning and zoning item 1-1-019, Ronald Koteki for Integrated Building Systems, Comrade LLC, regarding the property located at 433 Plaza Drive for the following. A, site and landscaping plan approval for an addition in the M Manufacturing District.
Hi, I'm not Ronald. That's my father. My name is Amy, and we work for Integrated Building Systems, and my father has started this business in 1978, and we just celebrated our 40th year in business, because he, it came to Westmont in 1978, I should say, and then. So we've been here for 40 years. My father bought a parcel in 1988 at 433 Plaza Drive, which is tonight's subject, and built a 43,000-square-foot building, and made it into eight units. It's a two-story building, and the, they're all rented out. They rented out very quickly. Right now, they house, what is it, Westmont Body Works, pardon me, I had Burkeholdts in my head. Westmont Body Works, and then a small dental equipment manufacturer in one unit. I do have pictures here. Can I put them over here, Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That's the north elevation from Plaza Drive. It is a manufacturing, it's all manufacturing. There is no, I think there's a small area that's a two-story office, correct? The rest of, two units, and then the rest of the area is for the auto shop for Westmont Body Works. This is the east elevation, where you have the townhomes here with the barrier of the trees, the east elevation. That's our building. And then this is kind of kitty-corner, the west elevation, right here. And then, this is, today, I took these on April 11th. So this is the current, what's the word?
Detention.
Retention pond, thank you, sir. Retention pond here, and the retention pond here. And this is where we'd like to build our addition, which is going to be a less, a little less, a little more than 9,000 square feet, to match the eve height of the existing building. Both of our tenants are requesting more room. They do not want to move, and we are hoping that we can build over the detention. The building, as it sits now, the location over the detention pond is the only place that we can build. It is to the west of the property. The BMW dealership does drain into our detention pond, since they've done that, and we can never keep it drained now. And it competes with our keeping the landscape nice and everything trimmed. So we've decided to build over the pond. These are the civil drawings. That's the pond as it stands now. Here's the existing building right here, and then this is the detention pond right here. And then this would be the existing building, and then we would have a finished floor slab right here, and then this would be covering the detention pond, withholding the detention pond. So it'd be an inverted swimming pool. And then this would be beyond the finished floor with the toilets over here, the future toilets, and then the proposed toilets would be over here, so that the, all the plumbing would be on the finished floor, would be on grade, so it wouldn't be over the detention pond. Everything over the detention pond would just be the And then it would go through the middle of it to drain out here to a little grate where it would be maintained and be able to be accessed through, and, you know, for cleaning purposes, or maintenance purposes, or the like. And that's what I have for you.
Is there anybody from the public speak on this? We'll close the public comment. Staff have any input, or?
This certainly would be an engineering marvel, and our planning engineer, Kim Nichol, has met with the petitioners on several occasions to have some preliminary discussions on what this will mean in terms of the unique factors for maintenance, et cetera. Her review comments are included in your packet, and I also wanted to point out that the landscape architects and fire department inspection, or planner view comments were also passed out this evening. The addition, it's about 9,176 square feet, and it does meet all bulk regulations of the district, so worry this evening is simply site and landscaping plan approval. All setbacks, setbacks, et cetera, were appropriate. The parking, the counts that we came to, we had to actually count a little bit differently than what's on the site, because the handicap spaces were shown without the eight-feet-wide of striping. But once all of the improvements would be completed, parking would be about 71 spaces, and that's more than adequate for the expansion plans. Apparently, about eight additional employees would be added in the new tenant space, and the parking requirement's just 21. So I don't have a lot to add, other than, you know, just the unique engineering factors that would be present if the site plan was approved.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'm not a contractor, and I don't, I bow to you contractors to be asking the questions. Moisture under the building, I don't know. This is...
Inverted swimming pools, concrete vaults that connect together. They have to have so much space. I just did some up in Schaumburg. It's pretty simple. It's underground. It's, it holds the water. It drains out, it restricts. When the water gets filled up, it sends out the water at a lower rate, and it's pretty simple. It's expensive, but it's simple. It can be done.
Great.
All right.
Great.
Sorry. BMW.
Dad, you want to build over water, right? Wonderful. Okay. Well, satisfy the village and the engineering, and hope it works, and we certainly want you to stay in the village. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas. In essence, she's going to build a nice big concrete basement that she could never use.
That's right. Exactly.
Fortunately.
For water.
Great, Dad.
This is what he handed down to his children. Isn't that wonderful?
Commissioner Pill?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Fred, is this an example of what we just saw installed at the Standard Market?
The only difference is, there's going to be a building over it.
Yes.
Instead of a parking lot.
Correct. Okay.
There was, I think, once upon a time, there was a guy named Frank Lloyd Wright that actually built a house over a river. So, you know, it's unusual, it's challenging, it makes it difficult to maintain and service the area. But if they can meet all the other requirements, it is legal.
I didn't quite understand that from the prints, then, so, or from your presentation. Now I do.
Apologize.
So then, and it looks like you're using just half of the area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's how I got that. Okay. And I read the parking numbers, and as you know, I'm your next-door neighbor. It seems to be a lot of congestion down at that end, on both sides of the street. And since there isn't anybody else down there, are these parking numbers accurate? Because I know that the Christian bookstore put a fairly large parking expansion on, and so they pretty much are self-contained. And since that's the only two businesses down there, we have to assume that it's them causing all the overflow parking. So while this sort of implies that there's parking in excess, it seems that what we see down there on a daily basis is a shortage, actually, of parking. Could you address that?
What I have seen is that, yes, this is accurate, in how many parking spaces that we do have. I've noted from the court that we're right next to, the sporting health club?
That's his.
That's you.
He, or the park district?
No, not the park district. Over, so you just bought the one, the building right next to us. The masonry building?
Yes, for expanded parking, in fact.
Perfect, yes. Have you done that yet? I don't know. Yeah?
For a year.
And so, from what I've seen, is that the people are walking from that on Plaza over to the court for, but now that you have that building, you know, I don't know. Because when we go over there, there's parking spaces every single time that we drive over there to attend with other problems. You know, the overhead doors jammed, you know, there's a leak in the building, stuff like that.
Little landlord things.
Right, exactly. So actually, outside of that, ever since you bought that building, that was wonderful, that you could expand for your people with the parking, because I do know that they were having a problem as you were addressing to us when you would say, especially when they tried to make that one road one-way.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. Yeah, I saw that as a potential for expanded parking at the time, for everybody concerned.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. Right. So, that's all I have for you.
Well, I, the count, I agree with, certainly. I just, it doesn't seem that, since both sides of the street are filled, and everybody's going into that building, it seems that there's more cars using it than, maybe there's more employees, or maybe they have cars there working, working on there, or something like that. I don't know. I was just curious, because with the structure this size, it doesn't seem like there's a correlating increase in parking. I think you added a few spots, but is that, that's the max you can get? Because I think there's a dire need for parking in that whole area.
Yes.
Everybody's been sucking up parking. It's like a vacuum out there, and stuff like that. I would love to build more parking and stuff. So I was just curious whether there's any other way to squeeze more parking in there, just for future. Because if those guys keep growing like that, I don't know where they'll go next, because they're up to the stop signs already.
Right.
So I just want them to be comfortable in there, and, because once you get west of the stop signs, then it gets to one side of the road.
Mm-hmm.
It's quite irregular, because of all the trucks backing in and out, and stuff like that.
Correct.
So it gets difficult to get additional parking and stuff. So I was just curious if there was any other ways to add any parking that you foresaw.
I don't know. We'd have to look into that.
Sir, if you could please, at the podium, the home audience cannot hear you.
Good evening. My name is Ron Koteki. And I was fortunate enough to give the company to my three children about six years ago. Amy's our director of design, so he's handling that for our general folks. And so she did all the sketches and put it all together. She more accurate for her to present it. The reality, of course, is that the tenant in the major building is Westmont Body Works. And the problem is being, as we all know, the Body Works is, people come and leave their cars. And he has, I think, 33 employees was our, so he has a lot of folks working on those cars in that building. But the reality is, if a car comes in, it stays one day, two days, three days. And I'm sure in the back, where he has his fencing, which you all have approved, that's where he puts these cars. And now I'm sure that the employees are parking anywhere they can, along with the automotive folks that have now inundated up on Ogden, and all their employees are parking back here. So the thing, we have, as one of our tenants, Navistar International, and they start at 6:30, so they can get their folks parked early. So the whole park doesn't seem to have enough public parking in ratio to the land. And it's just a part of growth, which is good for us, but it's a problem for you, and it's a problem for all the tenants there.
Well, part of planning and zoning is charged with the planning, and that's the aspect we look at. So when we look at expanding building footprint and structure, and bringing on more employees, and more people, and more business, and more storage of cars, where do you go? And he's a reputable person. I know that, unfortunately, I've had to use his services on more than one occasion. So I've been over there several times and stuff like that. And I think you've pretty much hit it on, you've summarized it very well. He's got everybody parked in the back that's going to stay there, because they need to secure that stuff. Because at night, you come by, and there's nothing out there in front, you know, it's pretty much empty and stuff, and it fills up quick. Plus, he has to leave room at the front door, as most businesses in the customer service industry are, for their customers. You don't want the customer to have to park down at Ty Warner and walk down and stuff, so you've got to leave that, so I can see where that goes. I was just hoping that, you've been so creative in how you're going to do this, it would have been neat if there could have been another 10 or 12 parking spots. Because I think they're going to continue to grow, and it's going to continue to stress that out. It's filled to the stop sign. And if you grow, I don't know what this percentage is on the increase. Well, you said it's about 10,000 versus 50, so 20%?
About 20 to 20%.
Okay, about 20% increase. You know, that could increase another 20% in autos. And if we're going to see that, it's going to, it's going to just compound that area down there. So I'm all for this. I support this. I think it's a great, a great design, and a great thought process. I just wish you could have figured out another way to get another 10, 12 spots in there. I think it's going to be needed. And at some point, push is going to come to shove down there. I know you didn't like the one-way idea, but I haven't seen a better one yet. That's all I have.
Commissioner Anton?
It seems like you're adding eight spaces. Is that correct?
The spaces on the north and the south.
I think it's nine?
Nine?
Eight.
I think it's a net increase of four, if you count the handicap spaces correctly.
Handicap, okay. Yeah, you ran your lot line. Yeah, my question was the parking also. No other way to do it. She wanted to go underground. Just kidding.
Put them on a rope.
Yeah. It is congested back there. I agree with my commissioner here. Going back
Going back there, you can't even get around, but it seems to be that the village is like that. We have a lot of that. Good luck with it. Good luck with that vault.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I was interested to know, you had indicated and it was also in our packet, that you're taking on the runoff from BMW. Was that by design? Was there your obligation to store their runoff?
This piece of property originally purchased was for the theater was designed there. And that theater apparently was going to do the whole park. The theater and the park did not make it. Therefore, the corner, which is now BMW dealership, which Laurel Motors, detention was not a big thing nowadays. And so, this portion of the property that we purchased back then was designated for detention. So, that BMW, and then we, I bought from Laurel Motors this piece and more of it back to the park. So, they were grandfathered in.
Okay.
And the property where the Lexus dealership is, they built a vault that failed and then they added to their building and they restricted that vault through into BMW property into our property. And so, it's building that kind of wonderful, wonderful experience.
Yeah. Okay, well, you have to satisfy all the engineering requirements, which probably goes beyond most of our ability to even assess. But, I wish you all the luck and glad you're staying instead of moving out.
We're hoping to add more tenants. And then, again, these tenants have been very good in terms of...
Tim Park? Commissioner Fadesco?
Yeah, I'm for one, I've actually heard of this type of construction, so it wasn't as scary to me. I know it works. It's just, I wouldn't know how it works. I just know it works. The only concern I have is like, once again, as far as the capacity, you're, are you increasing, you know, well, okay, you're going to be up at a level that's going to be higher than existing ground, correct, for the floor? The capacity of the retention, it can only go up to the, to where it overflows its banks today. So, the floor that you're proposing, how, you know, that's going to be even with the other floor, correct?
Yes. The finished floor...
Not going down at any point? In other words, you're not going to take any surface area away from the water in retention? Okay. So, that should work. I mean, it's just a space. It'll still house the same water. Has that ever flooded before? I mean, over its banks during any extreme rains?
On extreme occasion, it will flow into the street. But, we don't think it's so much the system as it is the debris of leaves, all that gets gathered during that flood stage. That's what blocks the outlet. Then, the whole area floods and then it automatically goes, the street essentially goes down and goes back around to where it does go anyway, but it's a different route.
Okay. So, it's not going to restrict anything? It's still going to pass through there and continue on?
It will go back.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, just what provisions, I'm not seeing anything for actually being able to physically clean this out with debris that's flowing through it. Obviously, you'll have a screen at the, at the upper end of it to keep things out, but still silt and everything.
She said they have access to actually...
We have access? Okay.
Yeah, the access point, what we're building is a concrete access here with a ladder. It's like a square mansion back then. And there'll be a grate over it, obviously for protection, not allowing you to go down and walk into this vault, this really vault, and do whatever you have to do. And it probably is not going to be fun, but it's probably better than what we have now because we can't get around to it if the ducks are taking over.
Yeah, the Canadians will be upset when they come in in a year or so and find out that they...
Their home's been cemented over.
Well, they won't stop them from stopping there.
Don't get ducks unlimited on you. Keep going.
We come out, there's a mass population of geese just...
I have no further questions. Good luck.
Somewhere I saw there was, looks like there are going to be a net increase of only four parking spaces. What about the five in the back, Shannon?
The five in the back? That was including everything on the proposed site plan.
Looks like they're proposing five parking stalls in the back of the building, too.
Yes, that included that.
Oh, that includes that?
Right.
Okay. And again, my question as Commissioner Fadesco, the high watermark, because I've seen where your pond overflows in the front when I was there today with the debris.
Trustee, this is where, excuse me, Commissioner, this is where a stamp certified engineering plan, you know, stormwater calculations must be presented to the village and it must meet our stormwater ordinances as well as those of DuPage County. So, it's, you know, you need a civil engineer that knows their stuff in order to be able to design this system.
The only question I would have is...
The high water table is identified on this sketch at 731.35 and the floor is at 734. So, we have free board of about three or four feet.
Plus, I see your overflow pipe is at your high watermark there.
Right.
Kind of a perforated riser.
Yeah.
An eight-inch overflow? That should be more than adequate, I would, I would hope.
The calculation and geometry of the quantity of water is controlled by, of course, the village. And so, they will be reviewing the calculations and the quantity and the size.
Your new, I'll call it a cistern if you would. It's going to be a larger storage area than what your pond is right now, I would presume?
It will have to compensate not only for what we had before, but for the new parking and the growth of the new building. So, it's larger than...
And you have the various correspondence from the fire department and from our...
Our moust.
Bob Fleck for our landscape and all that?
Yes, sir.
So, you're going to give us some beautiful trees?
Go for it.
The ducks will need them. Okay, that's all I have. Any further questions, commissioners? Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Planning and Zoning Item 11-019, a revised site and landscaping plan approval for an addition in EM Manufacturing District. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, you have our recommendation for approval and staff can tell you when you go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole.
Wonderful. Thank you, Board, for your attention.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
More than happy to have you here, sir. Planning and zoning item 11-020, Village of Westmont regarding the property located at 500 North Cass for the following. A, zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure.
You've got to watch these next petitioners here, Mr. Chairman. I intend to put them through the wringer. Good evening.
Good evening. Glenn Wildeberg, IT manager for the Village of Westmont. This...
You have to be sworn in.
Oh, okay.
I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you.
This came up when we went to add a antenna to the tower and looked at increasing the height of the tower and found out that there was no variance ever applied for the communications tower over at the police department. So, we are retroactively asking for permission to allow the number of antennas on that tower to be used.
Okay, staff?
So, just as a point of clarification, the total number's 11, including the new piece of equipment. And Glenn, can you refresh me on the height addition? Is that 20?
20 feet.
So, the total structure will measure, I believe, 60?
80.
80, excuse me.
60 now, 80 when we're done.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Fleet.
And this was, people in the neighborhood were notified and of this?
I have not received a single phone call from a neighbor.
Okay, but they were all notified and they had a chance to...
But, yes, I did receive notification that owners within 250 feet. There's been a public hearing sign up on the property and no contact, letters, or anything.
Okay. Will the configuration look different here with...
Yeah, just a 20-foot extension, that's it. So, exact same tower-type structure bolted on to the top of the existing tower. One of the antennas will be moved up to the top of that. The rest are staying where they're at.
Okay. No further questions.
Commissioner Fadesco?
It's on the backside of the property. It's not really visible from, from the front part of the building or the side. It's really visible to the neighbors, though. And if none of them came in and complained, I don't see any issue with it.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No comment.
Commissioner Anton?
I have a house at 500 North Grant and I think it's horrible. I'm just kidding. Kidding. No, it's, yeah, we got, we got notice in the mail there, so, yeah, good luck.
Commissioner Pill? No questions. Commissioner Thomas?
Has it been, have you put it up already? Is it...
The antenna is on the tower, correct?
So, you've added the antenna?
Correct.
But, by what?
The antenna had to be added for the consolidation with Downers Grove Dispatch. So, we're under a time constraint with the addition of that 11th antenna.
The 20 feet?
Okay. The 20 feet has not been added on. We're re-engineering the tower because there was no original plans available for the tower.
Do I have?
Then, the tower that's there is going to be 20 foot taller?
Correct.
I know it's complaint.
What's the overall height of that tower right now?
60 feet, is what we're being told, yeah.
No further questions? Well, since we are variance, we need a reading or findings of fact?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The subject property houses the village police and fire facilities. Numerous antennas are needed to maintain emergency communications for the safety of village residents. The installation of a new antenna is necessary in order to facilitate the new telecommunications operations resulting from a merger with the Village of Downers Grove Emergency Dispatch Center. The village could not maintain sufficient emergency communications and therefore not yield a reasonable return without this variance.
If you agree with this, we are unanimous in agreement?
Criteria number two, applied to the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant is a police department, which requires multiple antennas in order to maintain the public health, safety, and protection.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement.
Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Multiple antennas already exist on top of the subject property for emergency communication purposes, which do not adversely impact surrounding properties. The addition of this additional antenna will pose no further impact on the surrounding neighborhood.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Planning and Zoning Item 11-020, a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fadesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Any commissioners have any comments?
We're just a recommending body.
Okay, before we adjourn, I actually have one comment. Thank God for the American military. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.